Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of April 3rd, 2017. In accordance with LV 898, a copy of the open meetings law is posted in the back of the chamber. And we'll now begin by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a special presentation today. We'd like to welcome Mayor Byler for his Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon. Well, today's the day we do the Mayor's Award of Excellence, not just for the month, but for the whole year, the winner and the runner-up. Each January, all the monthly nominees and winners from the previous year, as you may recall, are considered again for the annual award. All the nominations are reviewed by a committee, which includes a representative from each union and also a non-union representative. And I would like any committee members who happen to be here today to stand and be recognized. Are there committee members here today?
Thank you.
Thank you for putting in the time. I'd also like to recognize any of the 2016 monthly nominees and winners who are present here today. Would you stand and be recognized? So, congratulations to all of them for the outstanding pieces of work that they did this last year. We're going to begin today with the Honorable Mention Award, which goes to Police Officer Robert Hurley, who has been with the Lincoln Police Department since 1991. He was nominated, you may recall, in the category of productivity. How are you, sir?
Good.
All right. By Sergeants Ken Cozio and Mike Ripley for his work on several major cases. This veteran criminal investigator specializes in the examination of cellular phones. In one case, people at the scene of a homicide refused to identify the victim or the party Hurley found a cellphone, identified the victim. He also then found incriminating texts with the initials of the suspect. Those initials led to the arrest of the suspect within hours of the homicide. Further efforts led to the arrest of three others and the recovery of the gun involved. During this investigation, Hurley wrote five search warrants, served 46 subpoenas, searched and downloaded seven cellphones, and contacted several cellphone companies to save records. And this is just one example of Officer Hurley's hard work to keep our community safe. So, please join me in congratulating Robert Hurley, our 2016 Honorable Mention Award winner.
I've worked with Bob in a different capacity long before this role, and we've always worked so well together. And in fact, Bob invited me to speak at a conference tomorrow that he is chairing and put together, the Nebraska IAAI Conference, and he's been a member of that for a long time and on the committee putting that together.
I'm currently the president.
You're currently the president?
Yep.
Yep. And that serves all of us in Nebraska trying to make us a little bit better. So, Bob, outstanding work and a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Chief Line Meister, Tom Cassidy, Assistant Chief Jackson, and of course, my wife Jennifer, who's here. She's also a police officer. Stand up. Two of my three kids, my son Matt and my daughter Morgan are here. And again, thank you to the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's my honor at this point in time to present the annual Mayor's Award of Excellence, and it's going to Startran Operator Jason Stegy from the Public Works and Utilities Department. Hello again.
Thanks.
He was nominated by Bus Operations Superintendent Mike Weston in the category of valor for his heroic actions last fall. You may remember this story. In fact, I'm sure you remember this story. But for others, the story began when Jason was out doing his job. And back when he won the monthly award, his story received a lot of coverage from the news media, in part because of video from the handy van tells the story. The evening of November 3rd, Jason was driving that vehicle north on 10th Street in heavy traffic. When he reached A Street, a young child started walking into the traffic, and Jason immediately stopped to block the traffic, honked his horn, jumped out of the van to protect the child, as the young boy was almost hit by a car. And once the child was safe, Jason took the time to reassure the driver of the other vehicle before leaving the scene, who was a driver that was quite upset, obviously. The difference between today and the monthly recognition that we gave Jason is that, since it's already been shown a number of times, we wanted to show again the video now on the screen. We do want to make people aware that it's very dramatic and maybe upsetting to some. But why don't we go ahead and run the video? Weston said, "I feel Jason's heroic actions saved the child from a potential catastrophic event." And I think that's very realizable, watching the film. For his outstanding service, it's my pleasure then to award the annual Mayor's Award for Excellence for 2016 to Jason Stegy. He will receive a $250 gift certificate, two days off with pay, and a plaque, and the thanks of the community for helping save a young boy. So, join me, please, in congratulating Jason for his award.
As you can see, he's trying to run off already. I'm Mike Weston. I'm the person that nominated Jason. When I first heard about this, from the original award, Jason didn't come to me and say, "I did this," or anything to really anybody. We heard about it through a Facebook post from a person that witnessed us on the street. So, as I investigated it and I discovered who it was, it's like, oh, that's Jason. He doesn't want to be the center of attention. He's a guy that comes to work every day, does his job, does it excellent, and we're so proud of him. Myself and the whole Startran family, so, Jason.
Thanks, Mike.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'm Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and it's my great honor. Boy, it just, it moves you to tears almost. But I noticed your Startran uniform, and I just wanted to say that your uniform isn't complete without a superhero cape.
Nor is the city's, thanks, complete without, in this case, going the extra step of honoring Jason with the Mayor's Medallion for Service to the City and for this great act of valor. We want you to have this in memory of the occasion.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for the award. And I was supposed to introduce my family. This is my wife Candy, my grandmother June, my son Jack, and my mom Janice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentations. Thank you all for being here today. These stories are so important to share, and we appreciate having the opportunity to hear them and see them. Thank you. We'll give you all a little bit of time to exit the chamber before we go on with the order of our business here at the council. For those of you who are remaining with us, agendas for the council meeting are available outside the chamber door, and if anyone needs a parking pass, please see our city clerk. The order of the business for the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak on an item may please come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor of the item shall speak first, then those who are opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Testifiers should clearly state their name and address, and know that testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and a timer will sound after four minutes as a warning. After testifying, if you could please sign in on the pink sheet next to the microphone, that would help us keep things moving. And after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any item, not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Courtesy and decorum are expected of all who come before this body. No one may approach city staff without permission from the council, and we ask that you refrain from applauding, booing, or other expressions of support or opposition. Those are allowed through testimony. All cellphones should be turned off and private conversation taken outside the chamber. And during the week, if you have other questions regarding any agenda item, please feel free to contact anyone on the council. Teresa, would you please call the first item?
Yes, our first item of business is the public hearing consent agenda. They are items one through 11.
Would anyone like to come forward and speak to any of these items on our consent agenda, items one through 11? Seeing none, please keep us moving.
If not, we can vote on these items. Item one was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Then items two and four through nine were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. We do not do the oath on SDL applications. I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They are the application of Hy-Vee Restaurant Number Five for a Class I liquor license at 7151 Stacy Lane, and the related manager application of Bob Reeve.
Hello.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rob Reeve. I'm with Hy-Vee, and asking to convert our liquor license at our Hy-Vee on Stacy Lane to incorporate a Market Grill, very similar to what we have in our North 27th store, and the one we're doing on O Street, 84th Street, and Village Drive. So, just a little bit later.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Go.
Just a quick one. Scott Slatter used to do these. Does he still do these, or are you?
Scott has retired.
Okay.
And so I took over for him.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for coming down today. Would anyone else like to speak to these items? Seeing none, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right, I'll call items 14 and 15 together. They are the application of McFarland Family Farms LLC, doing business as Max Creek Vineyards and Winery, for SDLs, one is to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet, at the Haymarket Farmers Market at Canopy Street and Q Street, on May 6th, 20th, and 27th, June 3rd, 17th, and 24th, July 15th, 22nd, and 29th, and August 5th, 19th, and 26th, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and noon. And the other one is for an area measuring approximately 60 feet by 90 feet at the Shops at Piedmont at 1265 South Cotner on May 20th, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks.
Why don't you tell us about these events?
Well, we're just excited. I'm Abby McFarland, one of the McFarlands. I'm the local one, so that's why I'm here today.
Could you state your address, just for the record?
Yes, 43315 Road 757, Lexington, Nebraska. And so we're just looking forward to the Farmers Markets and the Piedmont tasting, and all our servers have gone through the training, server training. So...
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward and testify on these items? All right, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right, next is item 16, application of Whiskey Run Creek Vineyard and Winery for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 1,000 feet by 700 feet, plus irregular upper level of baseball field measuring approximately 600 feet by 700 feet, including a bar measuring approximately 20 feet by 12 feet, and a buffet area to the south measuring approximately 30 feet by 25 feet, at Haymarket Park at 403 Line Drive Circle, on May 25th, between 6:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Welcome.
I was here just a few weeks ago doing this for a few others, and these guys are just jumping on board with, so...
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
Taylor Wyatt, 927 North 86th Street, 68505.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for coming back. Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? All right, seeing none, please call the next time.
All right, next is item 17, application of Whiskey Run Creek Vineyard and Winery for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 60 feet by 90 feet, at the Shops at Piedmont at 1265 South Cotner on May 20th, between 3:00 and 11:00 p.m. We did have a request to continue the public hearing and action on this item for one week. But if anyone is here to testify, they sure can come forward.
Would anyone like to speak to item 17? All right, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right, next then is item 18, application of SMG Food and Beverage for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 556 by 525 feet, at Pershing Center at 226 Centennial Mall South, on June 3rd, between 8:00 a.m. and 1:00 a.m.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Lorenz, General Manager at Pinnacle Bank Arena, SMG Lincoln. And yes, we are talking about Pershing Center today. We'll do an outdoor concert with our partners Mammoth Productions out of Kansas, and also the Bourbon. The concert will be a 311 concert. It's an ideal location, still outside of Pershing, with the remodeled mall. It looks very nice. We'll have the Capitol in the background. We'll be able to fully enclose the area with six-foot-high, 12-foot-wide chain link fence sections. All of our staff is trained. We'll close down part of Centennial Mall on Thursday evening to help set the stage, and then we'll leave as much open on Friday until we actually need to close it down. The event will be a Friday night, June 30th.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 19, application of Moran's Liquor for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 36 feet by 45 feet, at 3400 A Street on April 20th, May 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th, June 15th, July 20th, August 17th, and September 21st, between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m.
Eric Baum, 3710 LaSalle Street, and I'm with Moran's Liquor. This is in relationship to our Tour de Brew. It's a charitable bike ride that we've been doing since 2014. We've been having the SDLs for, we've had nine of them now, as the event's grown larger at our location. The bike ride starts at Moran's and then continues over to Cycle Works, heads over to downtown, and the riders go out to eat, and then we end at Imperial Brewing. We've raised over $25,000 in the last three years, and it's just been a really good event that the community's got behind, and we get to feature local breweries and local charities.
More of those all the time.
Yes.
Eric, I know that there was some concern about the arrangement. How have you addressed that concern?
I think it's been addressed. The Building and Safety was able to give us guidelines as to what they were expecting of us, and we're going to be able to fit into those guidelines. So, I don't think there's any issues, but if there was to be, we'd be more than happy to comply with that.
And I know that one other concern was about parking area and parking stalls, but correct me if I'm wrong, it's a cycling event, so I'm pretty sure people ride their bikes?
Yes. Almost all of our attending are on their bicycles. There was a part of our gravel lot that gets used during this event, but we're only taking a portion of it that would still allow for a car to be parked there as well. So, we're not decreasing any of our current parking.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right, next is item 20, application of Imperial Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 70 feet by 70 feet, and an outdoor area measuring approximately 50 feet by 50 feet, at 300 South 7th Street, on April 20th, May 18th, June 15th, July 20th, August 17th, and September 21st, between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jim Engelbart, 3340 Franklin Street, 68506. So, it's good to be able to follow Eric, because it's the same event for the most part, but our portion of it, taking place at our warehouse, got to see all you fine folks, I think, every month last summer, to do this, and with some help. I think we're ahead of the game, so I hardly get to see it once, at least for this event this year, as we got all six of them turned in at once. Eric didn't mention the charities that were featuring this year, so since you always ask me, I figured I would come prepared. So, April is Matt Talbot's Kitchen. May, we're doing the Malone Center. June is the Lincoln Bike Kitchen. July is Skate for Change. August is the Lincoln Animal Ambassadors, and September will be the Wix Home for Girls.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none. Roy?
I move approval of items 12 through 16 and 18 through 20.
Second.
Moved by Roy and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll, Teresa.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I now move that we continue item 17 to, one week, to April 10th with discussion.
Okay. Second. Moved by Roy and seconded by Jane. Discussion? All right, that's a motion to continue the public hearing and action to next week, April 10th. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 21 is amending the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards to assure consistency with federal and state air quality regulations.
Good afternoon, Judy Halsted, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. You have in front of you some air pollution regulations that we are primarily proposing changes to for being consistent with state and federal changes. Most of you are aware that we anticipate there are potentially more changes coming forward, but at this time, all we're doing is making changes to address state and federal changes that have occurred up to this point. We anticipate there'll be some additional EPA changes that will be coming, but we don't know what those are quite yet, so we're just getting us all up to speed so that we're consistent with where things are right now. Staff prepared a memo for you that outlines that most of the changes are related to just formatting changes, typographical errors, grammatical errors. Those were identified for you. The one, I would say, process or policy change that we're making that I wanted to draw your attention to, again, is for ease of our regulated sources. This is to make it easier for our sources to participate in part of what we're referring to as a general construction permit. Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality has this opportunity for those sources that are applying to them, and we wanted to put the same process in place. What it does is it simplifies the public notice process. So, for example, if UNL identified that they wanted to purchase a new generator, and Burlington Northern Santa Fe wanted to do the same thing, in the past, they would have to have applied to us for a permit, and they would have had to wait a 30-day time period for that public notice time period. And what we're doing is putting in place a process whereby the department would issue that general permit. It would allow a number of different businesses to come in under that same general operating permit for simplified number of processes. So, again, what we're trying to do is make it simpler for industry within the realm of what we're allowed to do. We're mirroring what Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality has done, and so we're hoping to make that easier for businesses as well. Would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know that this was probably bedtime reading for everyone with the small font and many pages, but hopefully the memo that Chris Schroeder put together could simplify that for you. The Air Pollution Control Advisory Board has approved these changes. The Board of Health approved these changes, and actually, the county board has approved the changes as well.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Judy. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Hit the button, let's start. Terry Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street, Lincoln, Stinkin', Nebraska. Okay, I'm not going to cuss, because we promised I wouldn't cuss. Now you understand, I pay your wages and you waste mine. Now the substandard laws you already have caused... Wow, I have to carry my own... Now is this water? No. I have to carry my own puke bags. You want to see the tumor? Guess what? I left it out so everybody could see. And that's breathing the air. Huh! But you all thought it was okay. Ain't no big deal, right? Judy Halsted's known about this for a long time. We've been fighting that concrete company that somebody decided was okay to put in front of residential, residential area homes. And we're going to leave Jeff alone. I wasn't talking about Jeff before. I was talking about that little man of mine who's in crisis, Crisis Center. Carl Eskridge, you've known about it, and you did nothing. You've known about it, and you've did nothing. You've known about it, and you've did nothing. Now when you vote, you make sure you vote like it was your home. You make sure you vote like it was your grandbabies. You make sure you vote like it was you. Because I guess I'm not dead, huh? Was supposed to be dead before Thanksgiving. Why come from that bunch? You don't tell me when I'm going to die. I decide. You people can't even handle a piddly little tornado. I watched you all be scared, and you Eskridge worried about the bubbles at Woods Park. Huh. I wonder if they turned out okay in the tornado. My granny, you know what she used to do? Jessie Custer Keible buried in Goodland, Kansas Cemetery. She used to send her grandbabies and her great-grandbabies out to find the tornadoes. You ever seen Gone with the Wind? You ever seen Wizard of Oz? Now you guys make $24,000 to sit up there and ruin people's lives. This is a lesson in transparency. Can you hand this to Councilman Christensen, please? All right? Now I've been running a campaign, and I don't have time for you people, okay? When we vote for leaders, do you know what it means? It means we trust you to behave and to do for everybody, not just the woods, bubbles, or the golf courses. And you, when you came over on that Sunday, you stopped me, I didn't stop you. Do you know what I was doing on that Sunday? For one thing, getting samples for my brother so he could have them done, because your health department doesn't know how to do it, okay? So hey, and plus, I was getting the license plates of the personal vehicle of the child molester, because my next-door neighbors, that those little babies are breathing all that crap, are six little girls and one little boy. Now do you think when that child molester molests those babies, we're going to wait for you? No, we're not. Just like Lynn Quinzer saying Rick Thorson of the Health Department didn't know what he was talking about. Rick Thorson knew exactly, but he was dead. So Lynn Quinzer, I want my money back. You guys been screwing me over for 17 effing years. I didn't say F-U-C-K, I said effing. Because my family, we cuss. You ever been around United States Marines? Well, when they come marching in here, guess what? One United States Marine can do this, or this, and shut down a whole Offutt Air Force Base. Now, we have another dead officer, don't we? Yes, we do. It's a tribal officer. Couldn't see through the fog. Was it fog of dust, or was it fog from Mother Nature? All right, but he's dead, isn't he? Now me, we all know I'm too damn mean to die, so let's start figuring out what we're doing. I have a campaign to win. Got it? You know my name, Terry Pope, P-O-P-E dash G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z, 349 South First Street. You been by to see the cemetery? You all been dying to steal it from me for how long?
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak to this item? Okay, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 22, Approving the Labor Contract Between the City and the Lincoln Police Union for a Term Effective August 11th, 2016 through August 31st, 2019.
Good afternoon, Council, Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. I'd like to present this labor agreement to you for your consideration of approval. This covers a three-year term with the Lincoln Police Union. Lincoln Police Union represents just under 300 uniformed officers for the city of Lincoln. In pre-council, I identified numerous changes to the contract. I'm only going to highlight a few of them here that are mostly economic in nature. A three-year agreement, year one, a 3% increase in wages, year two, a 3.25% increase in wages, and year three, a 3% increase in wages. There is an increase in the longevity pay, which aligns just a little bit below comparability. There is a change in the percentage of health insurance. Single decreases from 98% of the city share to 92% of the city share. Two, four, and family increases from 80% to 83%. There are other language changes. There's also a shift differential for both evening shift and night shift, which both increase, aligns with comparability. And again, a number of language changes for cleanup and maybe operational issues as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Roy.
Could you just comment on the nature of schedules and how this still does not align with our two-year budget cycle?
Certainly. As we try to align with two-year, with the biennial, this will be off a year in essence, but it still gives us an opportunity to know that we have 3% coming in the budget that we'll be able to count on rather than speculate as we may normally. So it'll be off-budget in that sense, but still gives us insight as to, we know that with this union, we'll owe 3% for wages going into the budget planning process.
Other questions? How common is it to get a three-year contract? We don't often see that, do we?
No, I think in part, and this is probably the first time I've been involved in a three-year contract, but then my longevity is not quite that long with the city either, because this contract expired in August of 2016, to this point forward, you can see that we're well into that contract year. So again, it made sense as the parties sat down and said, because of our negotiations had been so elongated, working on numerous language items, it made sense to just consider a third year and have some, as we say, labor piece over that period of time as well, so.
When will you enter into negotiations for the 1920, that second year of the biennium, next biennium? When would that next?
That's up to the parties, really. I mean, I suspect, you know, it'll be sometime, depending upon what's going on at the moment. I suspect it'll probably be in the spring or summer of that year. It all depends upon, you know, what we've got going on and the attitude of management and union at the time. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
I'm going to be real soft, so make sure you guys listen, okay? Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of South Salt Creek Community Organization. Why'd it take so long to get the contract done? Who's your union people? They're not very good. All right, let's see what this is. This is looking back at 2014. Satchquatch Hunter sends report to Butler County Sheriff. Wow. See Satchquatch? Well, frigid Wyoming town burns. Huh. Judge denies move, delays trial of the Marathon bombing. Wow. You'd have thought you'd have been jumping all over to make sure those first responders were good. Oh, here's one, here. This is all my research, Journal Lincoln, Journal Star, Wednesday, February 10th, 2016, page B3, Nebraska slash Local. Am I falling apart yet? Don't let me hang out, somebody. Stabbed man jailed for domestic assault. Woman's teenage son acted in self-defense. Man gets life sentence for two bank robberies. Amtrak train delayed for nearly 10 hours. An Amtrak train that struck an abandoned car and then a tree was delayed nearly 10 hours, just a few miles from its scheduled stop in Omaha. The first delay occurred around 10:30 PM Sunday after the train struck a car that authorities say was abandoned on tracks in Bellevue. That's by Offutt, Air Force Base. The wreckage was removed and the train resumed its journey three and a half hours later. With minutes, it struck a tree that had fallen across the tracks. Wow, you know, you think your first responders would have been your very first choice. Let me teach you how to do a tourniquet, okay? You people don't even know how to do a tourniquet. I've been teaching kids all week long, all year long. You take anything, you make sure you tie a knot, okay? You put it where the blood is, okay? So you've got to put it there. It's not that hard. You can tie a tourniquet yourself. You do this. Don't do it too tight. Tie it at least three times. Your kids don't know how to tie tourniquets, or they don't even know who their daddy is. And you people will not take care of your first responders. Do you know what it takes to become a first responder? Have any of you ever been a first responder? Now I'm saying first responder because that includes fireman, policeman, paramedics, ironworkers, me. Now in your town, in your state, you do not have a good Samaritan law. Now I have said this before, Teresa, please close your ears so you don't get your peace disturbed, okay? Those firemen, those policemen are better men than me. I would turn the other way, and I would say, I can't see, I don't know what happened. I can't see, so please don't move. I see that there's empty chairs. I'm thinking it's John Camp Trent, right? Because Cindy, I can see you when I'd really, he got a bald head, you have short hair, Eskridge, you always sit there, and Jane, you have longer hair. Jeff is here, Teresa's here, there's usually somebody there, and Mickey, how are you doing? It's over there. Okay. Do I want to keep doing this? No. Am I sick and tired of you? Yes. Okay? My daddy ran the union in Denver, Colorado, so there isn't anything you guys can't teach me that I haven't learned from my daddy. 1961, what were you doing? Were any of you alive? Google, I don't even have fancy phone. I don't even know, oh, I guess I got one with me today. Google, Denver police scandal, put in 1961. My daddy is the one who started that, brought them all down. How old was I in 1961? Does anybody know? Come on, Carl, you been to my house? Now, my husband's birthday is today, April 3rd, 1953, few minutes, right? Graduated Lincoln High, 1971. Now am I one of you? Been for 21 years, am I impressed? Not so much. Now I'm going to hobble back. If I do fall down, please do not let me lay there, okay?
Would anyone else like to speak to this item, number 22, the labor contract for the Lincoln Police Department? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next, under Public Hearing Ordinance's second reading, I will call items 23 through 27 together. They are all related to the same project, approving the Ninth and O Redevelopment Agreement with HLI Development relating to the redevelopment of property generally bounded by Ninth Street on the west, 10th Street on the east, and O Street on the north, amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $11,663 and $514 in TIF funds and $2.35 million in EEA funds for the Ninth and O Project, authorizing a 2% occupation tax effective January 1st, 2020, on gross receipts for the operation of a general business within the designated enhanced employment area to be used to pay for construction and operation of two hotels, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Ninth and O Redevelopment Project, and authorizing the issuance of occupation tax revenue bonds for the Ninth and O Redevelopment Project.
Good afternoon, I'm Dallas McGee with the City Urban Development Department. Hallie Salem is also here today, and we're both going to be reviewing these measures with you. Normally Dave Landis would be here, but Dave is out of town, so you get two of us instead of Dave today.
You had a comment that it might take less time.
Yeah. It just might.
We won't be making any comments, Johnny Cash or anything else.
This project is a key project in downtown Lincoln. It's on a key location as an entryway into downtown. It is at the corner of Ninth and O Streets.
You're pulling a Dave.
Oh dear, okay, there we go. Nineteen O. The private property that's a part of this project is just the development site itself. However, it is including all of the right-of-way in the streets that surround the block. Those of you that remember back in 1910, 2010, this is the way the building looked. There was a fire, and eventually, two of the buildings were demolished. And they remained, made looking like this for a number of years, for about six years. We've had a number of people that come into our office and looked at the possibility of redeveloping the site, and without success. They've all not been able to put the project together until HRI came to us in late 2015 and indicated that they would like to put a redevelopment project together for the site. Their project is a large project, it's 15, it could be as high as 17 stories. It's a mixed-use project with two hotels, approximately 200 rooms. There will be three floors of condominium housing on top and possibly additional floors, and a 263-stall parking garage as part of the project. The first floor will be retail and hotel lobby, and the total investment is estimated to be about $72 million. This is how that same intersection will look once its project is complete. This is looking at O Street, Ninth Street, this is looking to the southeast from Ninth and O. You'll see the retail, several levels of parking. Above the parking are two hotels, and above the hotels are condominium units. The city's assisting in two ways. We'll be assisting with TIF and EEA funding. The funding's estimated to be about just over $10 million of TIF that'll be used for public improvements and public enhancements, as well as $3.35 million of EEA funding. The EEA will be based on a 2% of hotel and ballroom revenue and will not impact any other businesses in downtown or even on the block. Hallie will review with you any other additional details and assistance, and also Mike Lang is here. Mike can address any questions you have on EEA, and the developers are here as well and can give you more information from their perspective.
Any questions for Dallas and Hallie before we let them go?
I did have a few more things.
Okay, good. Well, can I just ask you one question, Dallas?
Sure.
That drawing shows the condos at the very top. Is that with three or five floors of, is this the maximum height we're looking at, or is this the?
Looks like three.
That's the 15th level. 15th level, but it could be up to 17?
It could be two more floors, yeah.
Thank you.
How many condominiums are you anticipating for those three floors?
I think that's a question that you can ask the developer. I think it depends on the size of the units and the interest in various units, but I'm sure they can answer that for you.
I did want to clarify one thing. The EEA is actually $2.35 million, I just wanted to clarify that, and the TIF will be up to $11 million point six. So I just wanted to, I know better than to correct my boss, but I just wanted to make that clarification. So what you have on the screen is Exhibit C, the sources and uses, and I took the total TIF from the next two pages of that Exhibit C and just showed you at the bottom. So it's approximately 3/4 a million addition in TIF, depending on if they do 15 levels, 16 levels, or 17 levels. It's an additional 3/4 million TIF for each of those additional levels if that were to happen. Right now, we're just planning on that 15 level, and should they be able to sell the condos for the 16th and 17 levels very quickly, then that would be, that would allow them to spend the additional TIF toward facade improvements. That's the expected use. So I also just wanted to point out the uses of TIF, and just specifically refer to, the main category is site acquisition. There are TIF for fees related to cost of issuance fees and administrative fees, but the bulk you'll see there is site acquisition, and then also facade enhancements, and then utility relocation improvements, and streetscape and right-of-way improvements. and then utility relocation improvements, and streetscape and right-of-way improvements.
Questions, Carl?
Hallie, I'm not seeing very well. So, what's the, and maybe you have it up there, maybe you don't. What's the current value of the property?
The current, the current value of the property is 1.1 million.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, just to clarify, the expected not-to-protest value is 48.9 approximately for that 15 level.
Can you help us, just for everyone who may be watching, the site acquisition costs are at almost 2.5 million. You just mentioned, you just mentioned the value of the property is less than that. Can you help us understand the difference and what factors into the site acquisition costs aside from the value of the property?
Sure. The actual site acquisition is about 3 million. We didn't wanna use all the, we didn't wanna use the TIF for all of the acquisition. We split it between the EEA and TIF, and then, and that was the expected cost of the, of the land.
Okay. Any other questions for urban development? All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunziker, appearing on behalf of HLI Investments, or HLI LLC, excuse me. As Hallie said, and Dallas, this is a $72 million project, investment in downtown, to provide a really dramatic 15 to 17-story landmark building. This building, we think, will define the entryway to Lincoln from the west and from the north for a long time to come. It also represents a high degree of confidence in the market for upscale downtown living units. We've seen the market for student and young professional housing in Lincoln grow very quickly over the last few years and, and really blossom. This project represents a step up from that market, and we think it'll bring a different demographic to downtown living, and we think also a longer-term and stable resident to downtown Lincoln. We're doing, we're planning on 50 condominiums. We could make it less if someone wanted to purchase a larger one, but, but we think it's, that they're about the right size for 50 units right now. The two hotels will put us over the top in terms of the number of full-service rooms available that are necessary to host NCAA tournaments, which we think will be a big deal for Lincoln. The ballroom of the hotels will be a premier location for all kinds of, of social events, and overall, we think this is just a great project for Lincoln. Wanted to touch base, touch the EEA question briefly. This tax is applied only on businesses which are part of this project. There will be no businesses which had no reason to plan for a tax like this having it imposed on them. So, we think it's, it's a very good use of this tool to assist in a project which is, by any measure, a very, very heavy lift for a project in downtown Lincoln. It's, it's a, it's a major investment which requires every tool available to make it possible. And I try to answer any questions. We'll appreciate your approval.
Carl?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Any idea of the average square foot of the condos? You looking for a new place?
I don't.
Well, I know people that may.
John Clintwell, 5930 South, 114th Street, 68526. As small as 1,100 and as large as you would like, but mostly, it's 1,100, 1,500, 1,800. It's, it's the one bedrooms, some two bedrooms, and, and a few three bedrooms. But up on the top floor, you, you can have 5,000 square feet if you like, because it's all concrete, so we can kinda do whatever the person would love to live there. And I'm buying one.
Nice, okay. And the second question was about the, the ballroom. Will that be affiliated with one or both of the hotels, or will it be a separate entity? How, how will that go?
We, we, we will, it'll be part of the Indigo. We think the Indigo Upper brand, Potique Hotel will fit great for that, but obviously, the Holiday Express people probably with families, if it's a wedding, will be staying there and going to the ballroom, so, but we did identify it as Indigo, Potique Hotel.
Cindy?
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. So, I have a question about the ballroom also. The, I'm guessing there will be catered events, and I'm wondering if all the catering is going to take place from facilities that are onsite, or will there be outside caterers coming in, and thus, would there be an occupation tax on those caterers?
I'll let Mike answer about the occupation tax, but I can tell you that we're not allowing any caterers to come in. We'll have a great chef, and we're gonna have our own two kitchens, so there will not be probably any, I, I may let charities bring in some wine or something like that, but food-wise, we'll control it all.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I guess we spoke against this before when it came before the city council, and we continue to do so. We believe this is an abuse of the TIF legislation. According to part of the reading that I made was that there was to be plants and planters, and those types of things were not to be covered under the TIF. We see that adding an occupation tax has become the trend here in Lincoln, and I don't think probably it's ever gonna go away. And with the idea that you have more money from higher assessments, we feel that it's inappropriate to add occupation tax on occupation tax. Now, my understanding was that this was not going to be 2% on 2%. So, I'm not quite sure why you have to do 2% for this special thing, but maybe you can clarify that, or somebody can. If it's 4%, then it's even worse. You're shaking your head that this is true?
No.
No, it is not.
I'm, I'm not.
We'll, we'll have staff come up and answer those questions for you.
Okay. I still have more minutes. So, again, this is a, not a rich community. All the hoopla about how great Lincoln is is not going to draw all these kind of wealthy people to Lincoln to do this, that, and the other. And eventually, it's champagne appetite on a beer income. We think that this will, again, take money from the taxpayers and put a burden on them. We had, you raised the tax in several ways on us, and we are not happy about that at It seems like it's also going to destroy some of the look downtown if you have this tall building right in the center. When we've had, you won't be able to see the planes, or maybe you can see it better. Some people will say that, but again, we don't feel, we feel that this is not going to enhance the look of the downtown. So, tomorrow is the vote for the people on the city council, and we hope that those who are elected will have more consideration for the average taxpayer in Lincoln, and that in the future, we won't have these big operations that place us in difficulty as, as a common citizen. Hopefully, the TIF will be in some legislation at the state level. They didn't do it this year, but in the future, that will clarify how TIF is to be used and not make it so flexible, the law so flexible that it can be used in an appropriate way.
Mike, would you come up and respond to the question about the occupation tax amount or level percentage?
Mike Lang with the Mayor's Department. Sure. In taking a look at this, we do a lot of due diligence even before we get to the point of accepting, maybe doing an analysis of the occupation tax. For this particular project, it's well within the parameters of the state law, and so they can move forward with implementation, and it meets all the benchmarks that are required in statute. Now, when we do the due diligence, you know, one of the key ingredients, and there are a number of policy considerations, and it really sets the bar high, so I don't know if there would ever be a trend, is the number one, there's a private investment benchmark of $50 million. So, we're not talking about small projects in that regard. Secondly, there must be a strong retail base present, and one of the key attributes that we look for is basically doing an analysis to see just how much of the revenue is being imported to the community. This is a key ingredient. And essentially, what we did is we ran a zip code analysis of existing Lincoln, Lincoln Hotel Group-controlled hotels, and found out that well over 70% of the people staying in their hotels are from outside of the county, more likely out of the state. So, in terms of this particular project, the economic benefits associated with it are very strong, and, you know, we suggested moving forward with this legislation because it met all the needs, and we think there's a real benefit to the community.
Carl?
Mike, Ms. Kinsey had asked about the, the 2% occupation tax, I think, which is on this project, and then there's also the 2% on the, for the arena tax. So, do both apply here, or one, can you explain that?
I believe they both apply. I think I'll defer to Rick Payo on that. You know, another thing to remember is, you know, when we get into these analyses, they have to prove there's a large demonstrated financial gap, because we're viewing this as a, very much a gap financing tool. So, all things combined, we've developed, I think, pretty set of solid guidelines to be able to evaluate projects for their merit.
With respect to the occupation tax, I think the, the arena tax, as such, were basically more citywide in the sense that everybody's paying the food and beverage type taxes. We don't have a food and beverage tax, per se, on this occupation tax. There is a supplemental food and beverage tax on use of the ballroom, but that's separate and distinct. We're not allowing them to tax use of the restaurant, alcohol sales in the restaurant itself down at, at the, this building. So, there may be a little bit of overlap, but not much. Hotel occupancies, obviously, this is 2% on top of any other occupation tax the city has on hotels. Again, this is just for this particular property and the particular hotels utilizing this, and if somebody doesn't wanna stay there, they don't pay that, that 2% tax, but it is 2% on the, the rate of your lodging per night that's being taxed.
Thank you.
Once again, just to reiterate, these are developer-purchased bonds, so, you know, the risk is on the developer and not the city. I think that's an important point, structured much like our tax increment financing policies as well. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Richard Hawerson, 6311 Eminence Road, and I'm against these giveaways. I mean, we're giving back the TIF, giving back the EA bonds, giving the 2% occupation tax, and of course, they're, I guess they're giving part of our right-of-way too, right to the right-of-way. I can't think anything more you can give them, you know. So, what's, well, I guess there's nothing more you can give them, right-of-way, occupation bonds, TIF. Again, I'm just tired, don't like seeing all this money given out to private enterprise. I'm wondering how much the risk, according to the figures, we're in this for about 20% of the project, taxpayer funds. And that's without the 2% occupation tax. How much they, they connect for that? And the, I'm still, the occupation tax, according to what they're saying, if you go in there for a meal, you're only gonna pay 11% tax. So, if you take a family in there for, well, for a group dinner, you're gonna, there're gonna be 11% tax taxed onto your meal. Of course, I guess that's up to them, and unfortunately, some people may not realize that till they get the bill, and maybe it won't be optimized like that either. But yeah, our sales tax, well, actually, be more than 11%. Sales tax, occupation tax, well, two different occupation taxes, again, we're over 11%. Again, I suppose buyer beware, I guess, that's, again, I'm just think some people won't realize that until after they get the bill, and I guess they go back after, well, if they're from out of state, they're not going back probably anyway, so. Again, I just think there's, well, too much of a giveaway here. Everything we can, we're giving them, and again, it's, it doesn't, maybe you say, "Well, we'll get that in 15 years." Well, I'll be nursing home in mush in 15 years, so I probably won't be paying property tax in 15 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would there, anyone else like to come forward and speak to this item? Would the applicant like a rebuttal?
Madam Chair, I think it's important to, to just point out that everything about this project fits very squarely within the definitions and the, and the procedures that are in both the, the use of TIF and the EEA. The EEA is part of the redevelopment statute that the TIF bonds are included in, and it's simply a supplemental tool that was inserted into that statute some time ago. The restaurants within the, within the hotels will not be paying the, the EEA, the occupation tax. They will be paying the arena tax, but they will not be paying the additional occupation tax. And remember, the people who will be paying the occupation tax are those people, almost all of whom are coming to Lincoln from outside of Lincoln. They are not Lincoln taxpayers who are, who are going to be paying that tax. And as to this overall project and the general use of TIF, which seems to offend some people, what you have there today is a couple of vacant buildings which are gutted, no windows, no plumbing, no nothing, and a hole in the ground, which is an eyesore and has been for several years. This is a project that is going to alleviate that and put in its place a landmark, which I think Lincoln will be very, very proud of for a long time to come. The, the use of the TIF to at least allow the developer to recoup some of the costs that go into the assembly of a, of a parcel like this and the construction of a project of this size is all at the developer's risk. The bonds are purchased by the developer, and the city is not, it's not a general obligation bond. It's a, it's a, a bond that is, that does not carry the full faith and credit of the city, and if there's not enough money generated by the taxes on this building to pay off that bond, it's the developer who doesn't get paid. And I think you've seen some, some previous studies that have been done by the Urban Development Department that virtually every project, I don't think there's been a single project where the city has failed to generate sufficient revenue from TIF to pay off the bonds and to generate excess revenue during the 15-year period. So, I think it's a, it's something that deserves to be highlighted as something that is a, is a benefit to the city, not as a, not a handout to a developer. Not a handout to a developer. I try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If you'd please take us through the agenda, then, Teresa?
All right. That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item 21 is amending the Lincoln-Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards. This was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion?
Jane?
I just want to say this is one of the very many exciting things that the Board of Health looks at. And even though it's very small print, it's very informative.
Right. And we learned from the public hearing that this is largely about making our policies consistent with state and federal guidelines as they exist today. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Item 22 is the labor contract with LPU. Introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion?
I'd just like to point out that we're already done with the first year. Almost.
All right.
Good catch.
Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Public hearing ordinances, second reading are items 23 through 27. Ordinances, third reading. Item 28 is the master lease agreement with mobility for the purpose of installing, maintaining, and operating communications equipment on certain city properties, utility pools, and/or facilities. Introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Roy and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Item 29, change of zone 16045. Application of EDU LLC for a change from B4 Business District to B4 Business District PUD. And this is at O Street on the north, Antelope Creek on the east, K Street on the south, and Antelope Valley Parkway on the west. Introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roy and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, we have a motion to amend.
Do we have a motion to amend?
We do have the motion to amend that Kent See-Christ passed out last week, if you want to consider that.
I would make that motion. And as I recall, there were a couple of locations that had screening that wasn't necessarily originally considered to be signage. But then, after second consideration, it was signage. So that's what this amendment passed.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Roy. Any further discussion on the motion to amend number one? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0.
And now on the main motion, please, Teresa?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Item 30 is approving a contract between the city and Haymarket Development Corporation for the farmer's market. Introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Roy, seconded by Jane. Discussion? It's just a nice sign of spring to see this on our agenda. The farmer's market is headed our way. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Resolutions on first reading are items 31 through 34. Ordinances, first reading are items 35 through 43. On item 36, we did have the request to have second and third reading on April 10 due to the fact that the interest rate for the lease purchase will only be held by the bank until April 17. Then on items 40 through 42, we had the request to delay introduction for one week.
I'll move delay on the introduction of items 40 through 42 by one week.
Second.
Moved by Roy and seconded by Cindy.